Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Happy April Fool's Day. Welcome to the Mount Vernon City School District's regular school board meeting today, Tuesday, April 1st. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
Trustee Maribel.
Present.
Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Middleton.
Present.
Trustee Njinga.
Here.
Trustee White. Trustee Kerwin.
Present.
VP Kelly.
Here.
President Saunders.
Here.
Trustee De Grandpree, student trustee, not here. Please note, trustee Njinga is joining us there, video conference for this evening's meeting.
So we're gonna have the drum line, introduce them.
Good evening, all. Tonight, we're in for a special treat. We have one of two winning drum lines present. The X Factor drum line will be with us today, although we'll surely miss the Ice Cold drum line, we expected them as well. They recently competed and placed at the Battle in the Apple Band Competition. They both were successful in that competition. Mount Vernon truly is represented. Trustee Mitchell, I'll turn it over to you.
So, this is an example of just one of the things that our school district and the amount of efforts that go into giving something more to our students. And I want you to know that the most of the funding comes from either the people who run these drum lines, or the personal employees of our school district, especially for Ice Cold. A big shout to Mr. Gory and Alvin and the rest of the team who lead and manage Ice Cold, as well as Mr. Shaw, who's here with X Factor. This is my third Battle in the Apple, and probably my fourth year. I have two children on this drum line for X Factor. I've watched them grow in teammanship, I've watched them grow in skill, and I've watched them grow in just having an entire new way of thinking. My son walks around now and you can't tell him anything because he thinks he's, he knows he's the hottest thing on drums. But I also have watched our students in the district come to these events and really put on an incredible show, and you can see just how much efforts that our school district teachers and faculty are putting into them, and we can see just what the parents in the district are willing to let their children go out and be a part of. It's always, it's always in the agenda to try to find funds for things like this, so that we can expand the drum line. There's, I can't count how many conversations I've had, the amount of students that are interested but have to be turned away because there's just not enough funding to get them what they need. So, the conversation will continue here from my end with Dr. Smith and the rest of the board as well, to try to find anything we can do, to find just anything that we can possibly give to expand our program. It's just one of the things, Band Day is gone. If you're old as I am or older, you remember Band Day in Mount Vernon, the Twirlers and everything walked around, and it was amazing. It went from one end of Mount Vernon to the other. We don't have that at all anymore. These drum lines are the beginning of trying to return to letting that energy and that happiness, that feeling, that great feeling, come back and be shared with all of our age groups. It's a reminder, and it's a forge ahead indicator. Thank you.
Thank you for that, trustee Mitchell. I just want you to know that I used to be a Twirler for Mount Vernon High School, a couple of years ago, okay? So at this point, we ask, X Factor, please, show us your stuff. Let's give them another round of applause.[657.08][657.08](applause) That was magnificent. We want to thank them, as I indicated, recently they competed, we had two groups, and they did an amazing job. They represented Mount Vernon, and they both, both of them, both teams, is X Factor and it is Ice Cold. They both were in the top three, how about that?[680.02][680.02](applause) And that was in New York City, right? About how many people competed?
Uh, we have six bands competed.
Six bands. They represented Mount Vernon. Wasn't that nice, it got us going, right? Thank you so very much. And these, you know, we have people, they volunteer their time, they give to our students, and this helps our students develop skills, and you know, what happens when you work with students after school, they go on to do wonderful things. So I want to begin by giving a certificate. The first one is for X Factor Drum Line, and I would like to give this to you. Did you want to read the certificate?
(applause) Mount Vernon City School District Certificate of Recognition 2025. This certificate is proudly presented to X Factor Drum Line for their remarkable musical talent and dedication, achieving first place in the Battle in the Apple Band Competition on March 22nd, 2025, from Dr. K. Veronica Smith and the Board of Education.[744.87][744.87](applause) The Mount Vernon City School District Certificate of Recognition 2025. This certificate is proudly presented to Ice Cold Drum Line for their remarkable musical talent and dedication, achieving third place in the Battle in the Apple Band Competition on March 22nd, 2025, from Dr. K. Smith and the Board of Education. So, I was there to see this event. When I tell you that there were, there was drum lines from other states, the talent was through the roof. You wouldn't believe, from anywhere from fifteen drum line members to, we had, I think, it's thirty, it was, some of them had thirty people on, these, and they're all ages, and they're doing, throwing sticks across the whole gymnasium and catching them, and running on drums, and running on, it was insane, like I have no talent whatsoever, none, but these kids made me feel like I should pick up a drum set and just go bang on them and get right, so I was just glad to be a part of it.
Thank you so much.[808.12][808.12](applause)
Thank you so very much.
There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 PM the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism, however identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker this evening is Linda Castro.
I'm a retired educator.
Ms. Castro, can you speak into the mic, please?
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm a retired educator. Aside from being a classroom teacher, I've had, I've held positions of curriculum coordinator and teacher director. I became a lunch monitor in 2019 at Honor Academy here in Mount Vernon, a job which I actually greatly enjoyed. Several weeks ago, I made the difficult decision to resign because I was very distressed and frequently unable to sleep as a result of what happens regularly in the cafeteria. Children are screamed at and yelled at and punished for such things as eating too slowly, talking too loudly, not lining up quickly enough, taking an extra piece of fruit, not standing still, talking while in line, and even for simply coming over and talking to me. I've heard some lunch monitors say things like, "Move your butt," "I know you're lying." I've heard them threaten to tell the children's families. Last year, a visiting food service supervisor was so upset by what he observed and heard that he promptly went to the office to complain. When it comes to making requests of our children, "please" and "thank you" are foreign words to many of the lunch monitors. Punishments sometimes span several days and often come without any explanation of what exactly the child did wrong, or what that child might do to avoid the problem in the future. When the weather prevents going outside, the go-to activity is bringing the children into the auditorium to watch cartoons or movies, which have little or no learning value whatsoever. There are very few games are available as an alternative. Many lunch monitors frequently complain that the children are rude, difficult, or defiant. If the children are rude, difficult, or defiant, it just might be because the adults are not modeling positive behaviors that they expect from the children, nor do these adults seem to understand the children need to be reminded of what is expected of them over and over again. Repetition is an integral part of the learning process, it's not children being defiant. The effects of ongoing screaming, yelling, denigrating, and threatening remarks made to children, which add up to being verbal abuse, are all documented in studies conducted by organizations such as the American Medical Association, the American Pediatric Association, the National Institutes of Health, the American Psychological Association, and the World Health Organization. The effects include low self-esteem, depression, anger, aggression, bullying, and all the social difficulties that come with them. There is also an increased likelihood of children directing those same abusive behaviors towards others, not just now, but also in the future, creating cycles of abuse. No reputable college or university in this country offers a degree in teaching that recognizes constant punishment or any form of verbal abuse as acceptable or effective methods of discipline, nor is there any reputable training program for childcare workers that advocate such. I have expressed my concerns to school and district administrators who have acknowledged to me that the problem I've described exists, district-wide. Now, I'm expressing my concerns to you, members of the Board of Education, because our children deserve better. Learning doesn't just occur in the classroom, it happens as part of every interaction we have. If we want to give our children an education that will enable them to reach their potential in life, we need to teach them how to have positive interactions with others, how to engage with stimulating activities, and how to handle difficult situations calmly and productively. That all starts with the adults in their lives modeling positive behaviors, teaching them with kindness, and providing a welcoming and engaging environment. Our children here in Mount Vernon are stupendous. They, they deserve a lot more than they're getting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Castro. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Just to make it clear, she had an additional one minute, because it's four minutes, okay? So, just to clarify that. Yeah, the clock is a little off.
Thank you. Hope Maribel?
President Sanders, Dr. Smith, distinguished panelists. My name is Hope Maribel, and I'm speaking here today on behalf of the Mount Vernon Public Library. I would like to start, I would like to begin with an excerpt of a book written by Elwyn Brooks White, and the title of the book is called "The Letters of E.B. White." "If an unhappy childhood is indispensable for a writer, I am ill-equipped. I missed out on all of that, and was neither deprived nor unloved. It would be inaccurate, however, to say, 'My childhood was untroubled. The normal fears and worries of every child were in me. Every day was an awesome prospect. I was uneasy about practically everything: the uncertainty of the future, the panoply in discipline of school, the transitoriness of life, the mystery of the church and of God.' I brooded over these things, lived with them day by day. I took to writing early to assuage my uneasiness, to sewage my uneasiness and collect my thoughts. Our big house on 101 Summit Avenue was my castle. From it I emerged to do battle, and into it I retreated when I was frightened or in trouble." These are the words of Elwyn Brooks White, born in Mount Vernon, New York, in the year of 1899. He was even a writer for the Oracle Magazine, which still exists to this very day at Mount Vernon High School. And yet, this is a history that our children are not beneficiaries of, not just yet, because we have not yet taken the responsibility to claim this rich legacy for them, to pass it on to them, and to preserve it for generations to come. There's so much more that I could say today, but I know that my time is short. I would like to invite each and every one of you to further the conversation, to continue the conversation, on May 7th at the Mount Vernon Public Library, at which time we will do a full-blown presentation on why this is such, on why the acquiring of 101 Summit Avenue is such a great thing for our community. I don't think that you can put, and yes, it does come at a cost, but at the end of the day, I don't think that you can put a price tag on an historical legacy that the children of this community should be benefiting from when they walk through the doors of that second library branch. Thank you so much for hearing me out, and again, I look forward to continuing the conversation with you all, and I am humbly asking for your support. I would like to acknowledge that my colleague, trustee Crenshaw, is here today to support me, and I appreciate, yeah, and thank you so much, Ms. Crenshaw. Thank you very much. And by the way, I forgot your last name, but what you said was so eloquent, and I think it's so ironic that I spoke after you, because these things speak to one another, they truly do, and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.[1471.47][1471.47](applause)
Thank you. Brenda Miles?
My name is Brenda Miles. As I always tell you, I'm going by what I hear, not by what I know, and I stand to be corrected, okay? I'm coming before you, before the school board, with a concern I have with the possible removal of the principal of the Denzel Washington School of Performing Arts. I'm speaking as a concerned citizen and taxpayer with a concern for the school community as a whole. In light of the situation going on with the federal government, and the possibility of the closing down of the Department of Education, now is not the time to disrupt and disturb this school community, who is on track for a blue ribbon recognition of distinction, provided there's still a Department of Education on the federal level. The school district is already suffering from low school enrollment, loss of good teachers and faculty, and possibly loss of funding. We realize that there are policies and procedures that need to be adhered to, but in light of the low staffing throughout the district, the school board has the power and the authority to delay such changes until further notice, so that the district can become stabilized, and the performance of the whole district can be increased. Use your authority and don't be bulldozed into making decisions that would further cause damage in the school community. Now is the time for the board, the unions, and the community to come together to strategize what should be done if the Department of Education is dismantled. We need to work together to plan what we could do, so that our district can function without disruption. No one wants, no one waits until the storm comes and then plan. You must plan now, before the storm comes. Making drastic changes like the removal of Ms. Thomas would cause chaos instead of calm, with the possibility of a decrease in student enrollment and discouragement with the- Miles, please refrain from using names, please. Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, my bad. With the principal, okay. My bad, with the principal, okay. Instead of possibility of a decrease in student enrollment and discouragement with the students and faculty alike. In other words, if it's not broke, don't fix it. In light of the potential closing of the property that is the C2H Parker School, the board really needs to think this over. The fact that the, the stock market drops daily, are you sure you can sell this property? If you can, please get all the money up front, otherwise the district is at a loss. This is not the climate for rash decision-making. If anything, you should keep Parker open and offer up another property instead. Now is not the time to give up prime real estate and not get the prime price for it. It is too risky with the market losing so much money. Here's a suggestion, lease the property instead. That way, you'll have a continuous flow of money. You still own the property, and you can control what type of company comes into residential area. And I must say that Denzel Washington School of Performing Arts, their gospel choir, was invited this year to perform at the Radio City Music Hall during their Christmas spectacular. So they are doing a very good job over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cynthia Crenshaw?
Cynthia Crenshaw, I don't have the supporting documents I need to speak on the topic tonight, so I will not be speaking, but it's good to hear that I don't have to hear cut the mic off, honor, so you don't have to do that. That's all. I'll catch you guys next time. I don't have the supporting evidence that I need to speak on the topic tonight, but my mic is not gonna be cut off, right? Because I'm sitting down now.
Okay. And that ends public comment. Superintendent's report. Superintendent's report.
On Friday, March 21st, 2025, I had the pleasure of witnessing and experiencing the Denzel Washington School for the Arts Gospel Music Night. It was awesome. The talent demonstrated by our students is unparalleled and inspirational. On Saturday morning, March 22nd, I attended the presentation of the greenhouse at Mount Vernon High School. The initiative is Trustee Kelly's vision. Trustee Kelly, would you like to expand on that?
I don't think I should take credit. I think it was something that, thanks to our acting superintendent, Veronica Smith, helped to foster, we had a belief that we can utilize the resources in our district. So there's a greenhouse in Mount Vernon High School, and there is a science teacher that, I don't know how she did it, but she brought him out of retirement, and he spent a whole year volunteering and helping to make that greenhouse have impact in the community by helping to raise vegetations and plants and educating young people about the environment. And so this year, he's expanded that project to include an edible garden, which we hope to support the CTE programs. And we're hoping to get a grant to support the funding, so our students will have summer jobs. And our teachers will be able to teach about the environment, and they will be planting trees and growing vegetables and supporting our local community gardens. So we're hoping that that's going to be a rollout. And of course, I could not have done it without the curriculum instruction, Dr. Doggett and Mary Beth and Ms. Corpus. And did I mention Ms. DiCaprio is the one who was, yes? And now we are working with an organization to see if we can get the funding to support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Trustee Kelly. Again, it was a beautiful afternoon, and wonderful things are happening. I learned a lot that day, particularly that Mount Vernon needs about 60,000 trees. And we have a large population of asthmatic children, and the trees will help with that. So it was incredible. I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with that, and hopefully, we'll get the grant in which it's being applied for.
I forgot to thank my fellow trustees, because without their vote to expend the funds for this, knowing how restricted they are in our district, they had the vision to support this project, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you again. So it's that time again for the Edith Kaplan Scholarship Dinner Dance. This event is sponsored by the PTA Council. A portion of the funds that's raised goes towards scholarships for our students. Each year, staff members are honored. This event will take place on Friday, April 25th, 2025, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM at the Green Tree Country Club. I just wanted to acknowledge the honorees. The Amani School, the Amani Public Charter School has Colleen Frazier. Benjamin Turner has Chantel Hughes. Cecil H. Parker has Shanta Smith. Denzel Washington School for the Arts has Yvonne E.V. Wright. Edward Williams School has Melanie Flowers McMullin. Graham School has Stephanie McMillan, sorry, not McMillan, Milani. Graham School has Carmel Terrible. Hamilton School, Thalia Langley. Lincoln Elementary School, John Reynolds. And Mount Vernon Board of Education has Rita James. Mount Vernon High School has Franklin Scarlett. Mount Vernon Honor Academy, Lisa Acevedo. Mount Vernon Leadership Academy, Victor Flack. Mount Vernon PTA Council, Cassandra Laurent. Mount Vernon Steam Academy, Peta Palgi. Mount Vernon Septa, Donald Emerson. Mandela Schools, Sakai Brown. Pennington School, Dr. Melissa White. Rebecca Turner Academy, Matea Concepcion. And Trapegen School, Rebecca-- Let's give them all a round of applause. Please come out and support this event. It is a wonderful, wonderful gala. It is a formal event, and you could use the scan, I believe it's on the district website, in order to purchase your ticket. And so that ends the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We'll go right into committee reports. We'll start with the audit committee.
We have nothing to report yet about the audit for the committee.
Okay. Budget and finance, please.
Budget and finance, yes. The Budget and Finance Committee met on March 27th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. I want to start off by saying, well, before I say that, all the members of the Budget Committee was in attendance. I want to start off by saying that the school district is working to balance financial stability while maintaining essential services for students. We discuss the deficit that the school district is facing. The school district have a budget gap of $7.7 million for the school year 2024-2025. There is a projected expenditures of $280 million, and revenue for that school year is $273 million, which, that's why the gap of $7.7 million. So to address the shortfall, the district is exploring various funding options. Dr. Smith and Jose, who is the business assistant superintendent, mentioned to the committee that they sent a memo of conference to the Big Five to advocate for the school district. The advocacy is with the State Education Department and the state legislators. Also, the district has requested additional state aid, which is subject to approval by the legislators. The New York State budget deadline of April 1st was extended until Thursday, April 3rd. We will keep the community informed of any state aid changes. We also discussed the 2025-26 budget. The proposed 25-26 school year budget will be presented on April 9th. I know Jose had asked the board for an extension, but he came back and he said that he will have the budget completed by that time. So the budget is expected to include a mix of additional state aid. We're praying for that. A modest tax increase, new payment agreement with the city, and also internal cost-saving measures. As you're aware, the city of Mount Vernon is paying the school district right now $450,000 for taxes owed prior to 2020. This agreement will end in September of 2025. However, Dr. Morton was present at our last meeting, and he indicated that the city will owe the school district $7.7 million by the end of June 2025 for school year 2020, 2021, and also 21, 22. We will be meeting with Dr. Morton either this week or next week to discuss a payment agreement, because we were told that the city would not have the funding to make the school district whole. We're aware that Dr. Morton would have to speak to the mayor and, of course, the city council to get a new agreement. The budget timeline and key dates, as I said, April 9th will be a special board meeting, so Jose will present the budget. April 22nd, the board would adopt the 2025-26 budget. On April 23rd, the business office will submit the property tax report card to the State Education Department. Also, on April 23rd, there would be a development of budget newsletter going out. May 6th is public budget hearing to the community. And on April, uh, May 20th, sorry, annual budget vote and school board election is slated for May 20th. We'll be taking the budget presentation on the road. We will be meeting with community leaders, the community, and various stakeholders to present the budget. And in conclusion, I want to say that Dr. Smith, our acting superintendent, and Jose, the business assistant superintendent, the Budget Committee, and the Board of Trustees know how critical it is to finalize and balance the budget and ensure fiscal responsibility while supporting the education priorities in the school district. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Question?
Yeah. If any of you have any questions?
I just wanted to make sure I have this clear. So there's a budget gap of about $7.6 million.
Correct.
And the city will owe us about $7.7 million. Is that correct, in June?
In June.
So if the city made us whole, as they're required to do by law, our budget gap would go away. There would be no budget gap. Is that fair to say?
I would say that, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Question? I'm sorry. Question. You indicated that there's a $7.67 million budget gap for 2024-2025?
Correct.
So by June 30th, we're going to have a budget gap of $7.7 million? So how are we filling it?
Well--
Because that's the current school year.
That, right. 2024-2025 is the current school year. So I would turn that, I refer that to Jose, so he will be able to answer.
So every, pretty much every month, we do cash flow and fund balance projections. We did put a budget freeze early on in the year, but the projections have been showing that we will end up with that budget gap. So what we did was we wrote a memo to the state to notify them to see if we can get any additional state aid. Then we also spoke to our bond counsel. If we need to, we could do a budget note for this year, which would be paid back in roughly two years. And then if it curtails and we are able to get state aid, we'll be fine. And we obviously don't know exactly what the city is going to do yet, but the worst-case scenario would be that we would just go out for a budget note, which we are prepared for in case the other things do not work out. You're welcome.
So they are making payments to us every month, and that ends in September?
That ends September.
Okay. But that last payment should be a bigger balloon payment, right? They're making us $250,000? $250,000 a month?
No, they're making a payment of $450,000.
Okay. And then isn't the last payment supposed to be a larger amount? Is that right? Is it the same amount?
I would say, Jose--
Jose?
The last payment that the city owes in September, is that going to be a larger amount or the same, $450,000?
So the question is, so they're going to end that payment in September, but they're going to owe us another $7.7 in July, July 1st?
Right.
No. Just to clarify. So on the first question, the payment that is ending in September will be a little less than $450, because that's the remaining balance. I think it's about $350 to $375. That would make everything whole from everything that was past 2020. So that would solidify that first agreement. What we're looking for is another agreement with the city because of the 2020-21 taxes and 21-22 taxes, which the date, the end date is actually May of 2025. The city has made us aware that they don't feel they'll be able to fulfill that full obligation. So we're looking to make an agreement to see what is possible, because obviously, that is a large amount of revenue and does put us in a bad situation, not only to end this year, but also it would factor into next year as well.
Because if I remember, when Dr. Morton was here, he was discussing about doing a fast cash sale on some of the homes, correct?
Well, that's some of the ways that he proposed, that the city will be, you know, going out to--
Does anyone know if he's done that?
We have not met with him yet. As you're aware, we have not met with him yet. We should be meeting with him this week or next week.
Okay.
So we, I guess we would discuss that, that we could table that and discuss that with Dr. Morton.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claims Committee. The insurance claims committee will be meeting on April 7th, okay? Next is Education Committee.
Yes. We met on March 25th with Dr. Doggett and Mary Beth and Dr. Shatise Jackdandy. And we discussed the pre-kindergarten beginning of year versus middle-of-year data for 2024 and '25. And there seems to be some good news. So there, after review of the beginning of year, they said that there was an increased implementation of Tier 3 foundations, an increased focus in math, additional week of instruction per theme to increase time for spiraling of content. Schedules were changed and revamped, included less direct instruction and additional small group instruction. Centers were changed, addition of Alphabet Center and an addition of Fine Motor Centers. And this has been having a powerful or positive impact on students' results. They did a diagnostic K through 8 middle-of-year for the different schools that we had requested, and we're showing some improvements. I want to also say that there was, Mount Vernon City School Districts was highlighted for its outstanding achievement for Benjamin Turner Academy and Pennington Schools. They showed demonstrated and significant progress through their meticulous I-ready implementation plan, which had been effectively executed. We talked about the humanities department. They said ELA writing, that was some of the focus. The reading program considerations, alignment with the science of reading, which I was very happy to hear about. Structured ELA instructional blocks, consistencies across classrooms, data-driven instruction, professional development support, and resource efficiencies. Just trying to see what else we've got here. And they had program considerations, HMH Intro, Reading for K-5 and Intro, Literature for 6 through 8, Scholastic adding in the decodable and other components to support writing, Curriculum Associates. And they are looking to get, or to purchase next year, this is the first time I can say this, something for curriculum within the science of reading. They're investigating programs. And they're going to need a big ask, and I'm hoping that our Board of Trustees will be able to honor their ask, which is, I was told it was curriculum-based, and it might cost a million dollars. But I feel that a million dollars is worth it if it goes and improves the lives of every student in Mount Vernon at some point in their educational pursuits. So that is the end of education.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Kelly.
I covered.
Any questions on the education? Moving on to Facilities Committee?
Yes, the facility committee. The facility committee met on March 28th, and they reviewed all, all tanks have been completed except for Williams, have been removed, except for Williams. HVAC repairs are going on to ensure proper cooling for summer, for, for the summer, while lighting projects at Mount Vernon High School gyms are completed. Pennington School towel replacement after the flood they had is set to begin upon towel delivery in two weeks and complete electric, electrical wiring for the DWSA game room. What else? We have concluded that the final DLH inspection of the Mount Vernon Honor Academy overworked, overhung, are working to finalize the agreement with the district architect firm for bond project, project planning. And does my coworker have something to add?
I don't think, I don't think much. It's good to hear that the, the Pennington floor replacement is coming. That, that class has been displaced for some time now, and a teacher as well, so. And, and just a reminder for some background, there was a flood in that building from the gymnasium on the second floor sometime back, and I believe it was October, and that water came down. And I, you, I did come out and speak to the incredible job that the custodial staff over there did, and everybody that was hands-on to clean up. I'm glad to hear that this floor is finally being repaired.
Family and community engagement?
Yes, thank you. We met on March 20th. We discussed this parent survey that is very comprehensive. It's called the Diagnostic Tool for School and District Effectiveness. We reviewed that. The results of that will, will, will drive comprehensive, the comprehensive improvement plan for the school district going forward. Is that, is that survey going live now?
No, it's gonna be live, hopefully live.
Okay, it'll, that survey will be live at the end of next week. We talked about the New York State testing dates. A standard letter goes out to parents for students' grades 3 to 8. With those dates, it'll go out in multiple languages. Actually, I think it went out on the 25th of March last week it went out. And it includes information about best practice for test prep. The dates are also listed on the website calendar with the specific test names. And I think there, there will be an addition of pop-ups a week in advance of tests. We talked about upcoming district-wide family and community engagement events. A flyer will be coming out this month with, with events. That'll go up on the website. It's already out? Okay, it's already, wow, timely, April 1st, it's already out. And it was noted in the meeting that advertising the website does help spread the word. We touched on a couple of concerns. There was a little bit of a concern about parents getting information about Denzel Washington auditions. We discussed that and how the best thing was to contact the school directly or to look at the school district's website for information about that. There were questions about the reorganization, and it was noted by one of the parent coordinators that the information on the website about the reorganization has been very helpful for people. And we discussed the ongoing challenge of getting information out to the Spanish and Portuguese-speaking communities, but we're, we're working on it. That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next is food, services, and wellness.
Um, thank you.
Food services?
All right, I'm here, I'm, I'm, I'm here. I'm, I'm getting it together. All right. So the food service committee met on March 28th to discuss equipment grants, kitchen walkthroughs, which I did request to do some kitchen walkthroughs, as I usually do every year, and I've dropped the ball, so, just so that we can try to just engage with our workers to see what's needed, so that they can do their job. And the department finalized aiming to secure up to 20,000 per building for equipment grant list to get functional kitchen equipment from our closing buildings. So, and it was a great conversation, because we talked about utilizing functional equipment from buildings that are closing to go take that equipment and move it to buil, to buildings that have broken equipment, so that we can truly focus on using that grant money to buy machinery and equipment that we truly do need, rather than buying stuff that we probably can salvage from the closing buildings and use elsewhere. We also discussed the food service contract updates, which were, which is happening now, which is very important, because it has to do with, again, looking at what we're feeding our babies and what they're getting, how much they're getting, whether it has inequality, what I want to sit and eat it right alongside them. But what we want to definitely mention is, there's a survey getting ready to come out, and Mr. Ramandi, thank you for sharing the, that survey with us today. I did run through it myself. I thought it was pretty straightforward. It's very important. It's very important, because what it does is it actually, it, it gives students the ability to answer some questions and tell what they really want to see in their food menu and, and what they, what they need as far as portion size, as well as what they want to see to eat, what they like, what they don't like. So it's very important that when, when the survey comes out, are we gonna send in our email like the same way we did for, say, the superintendent search? Is this gonna be on the district site? So let's talk about that. I just want to make sure we have to get a far reach. We got a very good response on that particular, the superintendent search. It would be good to get some 800 people come back, especially students. So we should, I want to get out there and get it out. So thank you. As far as wellness goes, we had an improv, I had, I just got ganked into a meeting we had over at Denzel Washington for a little while. We were just talking about wellness, and they have these rooms, there's a, a restroom, I think, not a restroom, that's wrong. It's a, what's the name of the room that they have over at, I think it says steam? Then they open up the room, it's like it's dim lit and it's comfortable chairs?
Sensory?
Not the esports room. That's another question I have too.
Is that the sensory?
I don't know if it's called the sensory room, but what it is, is basically...
I don't know what you're talking about.
You know what I'm talking about? It's a room where the students can go and relax. They can rest, it's quiet, the lights are dim, it's nothing but calm and peace, and there's an agenda to put more of these rooms and more of the buildings in the district. So I hadn't heard about it. I didn't know that it was district-wide, but I'm gonna bring it to my fellow board members as well to have a discussion, so that we can truly get behind it and see it. From my understanding, there is not a lot of cause behind it, and we have some people who are definitely trying to make it happen. It's part of mental health wellness. Is that, yes. So, and I, I've been, I want to see it. I want to go. So I'm gonna request a tour, so that I can see the ones that are already up and running, and then we can have a conversation, all of us together. It's, it's just a huge agenda, especially when we're dealing with so much challenge now in the district. Wellness, mental and emotional is huge, and this is, you know, and it's, it is beyond now, it's definitely right. It's right now, and our children are facing these things, so many different changes every single day that we have no clue. Anything that they can call the safe space is extremely crucial.
Thank you for your report. Now we're going to HR.
Sorry, I have a question. Could I, I just wanted to piggyback on, on what you just said, how the importance of these sensory rooms are very, very valuable tools, and also the CTE opening of the hospitality suite.
Oh, I gotta talk about that. You wanna talk about that?
You, you, I, I just, I wanted to cue you, because I knew you'd want to mention it.
Trustee Maribel, so hold on, so, so trustee Maribel, myself, and trustee McDonough were at the CTE hospitality grand opening, ribbon cutting. Who turned my mic off? Stop playing with me. My mic's on, all right. No, it was amazing. So there were about 43 student chefs doing line chef work, making empanadas that I didn't get. And where's my gift bag? I'm gonna find that. Mark, you got my gift bag? But listen, I just want to say, partnership with Goya, we had Goya in the building, and they just, we talked about the fact that we've got a partnership with Goya, and they're getting, they're behind this CTE hospitality program. I'm gonna ask Mr. Ramandi to mention something about it. He did the ribbon cutting, uh, who else was there? Oh, Brian Simmons, who was the director of CTE?
And Dr. Doggett.
And Dr. Doggett, yes, who's here, and he dresses better than me, but I was very happy to be there, but can we talk about this right now? It's amazing.
So last week, we had a ribbon cutting for our CTE, it was a culinary lab. And if you remember, this space was used for a variety of purposes throughout the years, and then when we found ourselves with this opportunity to take advantage of it, we called all of our in-house crew to come in and totally remodel the entire space internally. We utilized equipment that we had to build a culinary lab kitchen. We onboarded appropriate staff who knew how to teach this subject, some heavy hitters from New York City Department of Ed who wanted to come and join the Mount Vernon City School District team, which we were very grateful for. And we were able to put together a really state-of-the-art culinary lab and secure partnership from Goya, which is one of the largest companies in the world, to help our students get the food, get the training, and that, that, build that bridge to move forward. And we're looking towards the future of all these great initiatives, some cook-off competitions between us and other school districts, that it's really gonna put Mount Vernon on the map in a positive light, and this is some of the things we need to bring back, because we have many talents, not just academically or athletic, but also culinary arts and that sort of thing. So this is just, it was a great day to show all the hard work that we did in-house, authentic, organic, and I think it's gonna last for a very long time. So it was, it was awesome to be part of all that.
Yeah, I'm just gonna shout, a big shout out to Chef Kat.
Chef Kat.
Chef Kat, who is, who was incredible. We had to watch her manage all of these students. She was on fire. But you know what I will ask? Where was News 12? This is an incredible thing that happened, and News 12 was nowhere, but let some nonsense go on, and they're like sitting outside like this. This is something News 12 should have been at. It's because, yeah, negativity, no. Positivity, we needed that type of coverage for this, so they should pay attention. If you're in here now, somebody, somebody send a text message. Thank you.
I'd just like to know, since Dr. Doggett is the assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction, charge the CTE programs, if he has anything he wants to add to that?
I just want to echo the sentiments of trustee Mitchell, Ramandi as well. I do like to thank Brian Simmons and Dr. Pauline Pierce for spearheading this and also growing the culinary department. I think it's an opportunity for our students to see all the wonderful things that's happening to CTE, how it's expanding, and like you said, News 12 should be there. We need to, we need to advertise this and make it a little bit bigger. We started out small, we'll see how it goes, and then we'll just make sure that we make sure that apartment expands and we have a better broadcast, so everybody can see it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Moving right along to human resources. Human resources, trustee White.
We will be meeting April 10th at 1 o'clock online.
Okay, thank you. Trustee McDonough, IDA?
The IDA meets next Thursday, April 10th.
Insurance, have insurance. Trustee Curran, we don't have anything from insurance?
The insurance...
They're meeting on the 7th.
It's, yes.
We will be meeting on the 7th with the claims committee as well.
Policy committee, so the policies from the retreat that we did are being, have been reviewed in conjunction with the district's current policies. A draft of best, of best of both worlds will be disseminated through Thursday to the policy committee to review, and then after discussion, any amendments, the policy we, the policies will proceed to the general board. So we're going to meet to discuss these on Thursday, and we'll present them to the board right after that, okay? Safety and security, trustee Njenga, is she still on?
Yes, I am.
There you go.
We haven't met for the month, but we should be meeting within a week for security.
Perfect, thank you, trustee Njenga. Special education?
The security did meet.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, there was a meeting. Mr. Ramandi actually helped me out. He printed out the report. Security, actually, I'm sorry, trustee Njenga, I might, not sure if you were, if you were present, I might have, if you don't mind, I'll just read it, I know you're the chair. They did meet on the 28th to discuss training, operational planning, staffing, and summer prep. Building offices have undergone Infinity Campus photo training to enhance security procedures, and the committee reviewed summer supply orders, scheduled maintenance for security equipment, and considered budget approvals for necessary repairs. Additionally, the operations department reached out to the Mount Vernon Police Department regarding the need for additional crossing guards and learning that the city, and learning that the city is facing staffing and retention challenges. Both parties are working together to address the issue. So the, the, the school crossing guard situation is not new, right? So my understanding, and I think it was made clear, is that state guideline says that the city has to provide the crossing guards for elementary schools. But I believe that when we went to make K to 8, that kind of muddied the water for where they had to put a crossing guard, is that correct?
That I don't know exactly, but if it's K to 8, it's still elementary.
Right.
So my, I had a conversation with the deputy commissioner this morning, and, you know, they've been very cooperative, very helpful with us, and they expressed that they're having difficulty staffing and retaining guards, and then also if there are, there's call-outs filling those positions, so there's some challenges that we're trying to partner with. They've been very good. If there is a, a real high need, they'll send a squad car by to just help with the crossing of the traffic, you know, at, as much as they can, but they're facing those types of challenges.
Yeah, I see. I mean, Lincoln School, big shouts to the gentleman who's been out there, he's a senior citizen, he's out there, he's out there now with a cane, but he's still a crossing guard. Big shouts to the, the crossing guard over at Mandela as well, who actually is directing whole traffic, not just people crossing, he's actually stopping cars, all right? And of course, over here, right over at Mount Vernon, the leadership, Honor Academy. All our crossing guards, really appreciative of what they do.
Thank you. Next is special education?
We will be meeting next week.
Okay. And lastly, technology.
Yes, the technology committee met on March 24th. I'd like to acknowledge the director, Mr. Ramirez, and the assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction, Dr. Doggett, for their participation, their information that we gathered during that session. One of the items we discussed was the tech readiness for New York State computer-based testing. Through that, some action items was we looked at the Lyric Data Services Service Learning Agreement, looking at the hub as a central location for all CBT readiness materials, looking at the Lyric Collaborative Network Support for the Service Learning Agreement, and the CPT assessment determined that the devices, that devices are essential and need to be upgraded. The last time they were upgraded was during COVID, when we had a mass purchase of about 1,500 devices. Those devices are now obsolete, and we will need to upgrade them in the coming budget. Hopefully, we will be, get support for that. It will cost about a million dollars. A follow-up, we need to take a look at the Service Learning Agreements with BOSI's and create a common language for the director of technology to delegate IT help desk team and coordination. For example, the Lyric Collaborative Network Support Service Learning Agreement language needs to include the coordination with the district, the director of technology and/or his designee needs to be added to the language. In addition to that, we need to also ensure that the language on the SLA includes that is based on the adoption of, or the approval of our budget. So we had asked if they would submit that language to our attorneys in order to ensure that we are in agreement and in alignment. Also, we talked about the cost-effectiveness review of instructional software, and we found duplication of some services. We also found that there were some services that were not necessarily being highly utilized, so they are being scaled back, and they are being addressed, and they will be reflective in the upcoming budget, so that we can make sure that anyone that's actually using the services does not, that their services are not truncated, but the ones that are not using it, that we're not paying for services that we're not actually using. We also are ensuring that BOSI's costs are reflective of the lowest cost possible and in alignment with the state contract, and that we are not overpaying for those services, even if the aid that we receive makes those services or those costs or expenses lower. We are also looking at instructional technology and determining where we're We are also looking at instructional technology and determining where we can make savings also in the budget. We are also in, we also found out that there were some services that BOSI's was charging for that New York State Education Department is actually providing to districts for free, so we are investigating that and looking into it, and it will be reflected in the budget as well. Also, district consolidation of technology in light of the closing of schools. Where can we use those sort of services? Where can we use that equipment? Also, making sure that our IT Help Desk status that our priorities are being met. There has been, inventory is being conducted throughout the schools. There was an inventory review during the winter break at each one of the three buildings that are closing to ensure the best use of those, that equipment, and also using the best technology in order to ensure that if there are any, any materials that are at risk of theft, they are being tracked by a program called Absolute, and ensuring that we have a procedure and a policy that if we identify equipment that is stolen, that we ensure that there's a policy in place to address those concerns. And that completes the report, the Technology Committee.
Any questions for Technology? Thank you, Trustee Maribou. That concludes Committee, that concludes Committee Report. We're going to go on to follow up on old business. These are questions from Public Comment from Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. Number one question, did the trustees receive an official letter that the schools are closing? The Board Trustees voted on it. Number two, are you going back on employee observations or appraisals? That question was unclear. Number three, does seniority play a role in your decision-making? That would be yes. What happens to students who audition for 6th, 7th, and 8th grade? Answer is auditions are rise, are rising 9th, 10th, and 11th and 12th graders. Question five, what will happen to the students that will not be entering 9th grade? Same as the above. Will the students continue their arts majors? That would be yes. Should students who audition transfer back to their neighborhood schools? The answer is we follow the regular transfer procedure. Number eight, need to address the need for crossing guards and pedestrian signals at our schools. And that was just answered. We are collaborating with the City of Mount Vernon, who informed us that they are struggling to retain and hiring crossing guards. And that concludes old business.
Trustee, Trustee Mitchell, did you, this is?
I'm trying to digest the answers that we just received to those questions. I still have questions on the questions. I have questions on the answers. All right, so last month was Women's History Month. So every now and again, when I get a chance, I try to ask that we get some feedback from the children, from the babies, to write me letters about certain topics. And thanks to Dr. Smith, who communicated it to several of the principals. I focused on Parker and Leadership Academy and Honor Academy, especially because those buildings are closing, and those students, we really need to just make sure we pour into them as much as we can, you know, the ones that would not be leaving or losing their building, and, you know, having a face transition and things like that. But it was more important that I wanted to salute Women's History Month. I sit on a school board with the majority of, of powerful women, and I want to salute every one of you, although a lot of times we don't see eye to eye, but I do appreciate a lot of times my energy is abrasive, and I apologize for that, but it's for the best, and we're all here for the same reason. I can't repeat it anymore. What did I say? What, what, say what part, say what part?
Do you want me to say for you?
No, no, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. No, no, again, so, you know, I apologize if a lot of times, yeah, my energy seems like it's off, but trust me, it's coming from a good place. And then, okay, I heard that. Anyway, so, well, what I did do was I asked students to write from several different classes. I'm not going to read every letter, because I literally got like 32 letters, which is, yeah, it's really, really amazing. I really appreciate it. I will share only a couple briefly. From Ms. Donahue's class over at Honor Academy, one letter, the young lady said, "One important woman in my life is my older cousin. She's important to me because I could talk to her about anything without her judging me. She gives me advice and doesn't try to make the whole situation a big deal." Another student, uh, let me see, another student said, you know, "Women's History Month is important to celebrate because how well the younger generation see all the significant accomplishments that women had made over the decades. For example, for Winfrey, she has her own talk show and is a billionaire. She also mentioned, you know, an important woman in her life, is the strong encouraging her homework, and is her lovely mother." And what I noticed, even across, even, you know, a lot of the young ladies who wrote, it was a lot of young ladies, but there were some young men as well, and that was really cool. You know, "An important woman in my life is my mom. She is the reason why I'm here in this world and raised me from when I was born to now, even today. She still babys me when I just get a small cut and even treats me like her little princess when I'm sick." You know, and then I have another one, "There are many important women in my life, the most important being my mother. She is the most hardworking, loving, and caring woman and person I have and will ever meet." There was a tone from most of these letters, and I don't want to keep going. I've been told that it's all about me. So, so the tone of most of these letters, and so many of these letters, is they talked about mom. Yeah, so Mother's Day is coming, but this is going to give us another tape, but I really wanted to say how really good it felt to hear these children go and say, you know what, the most important is mom, it's mom. It was cool that one, one of them had their cousin, or this, but salute to all women for Women's History Month, but all year round. There's no month long enough to salute you the way you deserve, and you are appreciated. Thank you very much for your position in this world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee Mitchell. So right now, I'm going to ask for a motion to take a pause and go into executive session to discuss some resolutions before we come back out. We estimate a time of about, I can't even estimate with these people, but I'm going to say 30 minutes, okay?
So, let me do a motion.
Okay.
Get it on record. So can I have a motion, please, to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on a pending matter? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. We are in executive session for?
You want to speak again?
About 30 minutes. We will return to public session.
You want me to, you want me to log out now?
Who's missing? That's Helene.
Okay, welcome back. Motion to reconvene to public session.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do we get Njenga back?
Wait, where's?
She's here. Helene's over there? Okay.
I see. Can we bring it a little further? Yeah, okay. Just to bring it a little, no, 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 just bring it further to the front, just so we could kind of see.
Thank you.
So can I have a motion for 7.1, Human Resources 123A, certified?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Read it? How did you get the 7.1? Start here. Did I need to refresh? No, you have to refresh. No, because we, because we added in executive session, the numbers got changed. Okay. All right, I'm following your lead.
Can I have a motion for 7.2, Human Resources 123B, classified?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Just to note that the numbers are off because we added in executive content, so, all right, their information's still the same, just the numbers are not the same right now, right? So just. Can I have a motion for 7.3, request for a leave of absent?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.4, approval of the title change at Central Office for Reorganization?
Motion. Second. Questions?
Questions, concerns?
Just for the clarity in front of the public, this is related to the, the fact that DEI is, can no longer be in the title, and that's because of the executive order that came down?
Yes.
So that we could, because of the threat of losing federal funding? So this is just us conforming with that?
That's it. Just conforming.
Question? Question? I'd still would just like to have a reorg, an organization chart of the district. I made a request, and I have not received it, and so it would be helpful. Thank you. Will this person's position change in the reorganization, or will it be a?
She has additional.
But she would stay in the same?
Yes, the director.
Okay, but we could, but that's the list we would like. I'm, right.
Only, only other question I had was, is there any change in salary?
No.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.1, Authorization for the Saturday Regions Review Program?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
One question.
When are we going to communicate that we're doing these review programs? Are we going to, when are we going to make it, make it, make the public aware, the parents aware? If we haven't already, am I missing it? We have?
Yes.
Okay, so the schools individually are sending out, like, the notification?
Yes, notification, they take care of the school.
Thank you.
I have a question. Oh, okay, so this, when it says sub, that's a substitute for the administrator?
Which one?
I'm looking at, um.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Aye.
She's, she's on a delay. She's on a delay. Got it. Can I have a motion for 9.1, Approval of Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 17, dated April 1st, 2025?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.2, Amend Reso 8.2, Board Approved, March 4th, 2025, Authorization to Hire Staff for ELA Academic Academy for McKinney-Vento Program, June the 24th, '25 school year?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Didn't we vote on this, or last week, or, I mean, last point?
So it's amended.
We just changed it, amended it.
So this, you did vote on this, and you voted on it because we had an employee who's not in the M A, MVAG union. They said that although she has the proper certification, since she's not in their union, she could not have that position, and that they would grieve us if we continue. While we've hired people like this in the past, they said that they weren't aware of it. And, and so this is why this is being amended. It came up because that individual was being paid $44 an hour and wanted the $55 an hour as a supervisor, so that brought it to the attention of the union. And as a result of that, that's why this is being amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'm going to slow it down. Can I have a motion for 10.1, Authorization for Sovereign Engineers to Provide Services Related to the District Reorganization and Reconfiguration?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.2, Authorization to Use Luzon Environment Services for the Removal of the Fuel Tank at Williams School?
Motion. Second. Questions?
Second.
Question, um, just refresh me, I can't remember. Who have we used to remove any other fuel tanks?
We haven't used anybody to remove any tanks, just abandoned in place, but this is the company that's been doing the abandonment.
Okay, so are we going to have other ones that they're going to have to remove as well, right?
No, this is the only one.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.3, Authorization to Reject Bid Number 2024/25-08, Snore Removal?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, any discussions?
Question, the bid's not attached here, right?
So this is, a bid went out, and it was, the one bidder also failed to submit a bid bond, so we couldn't accept the bid. So what we're doing is we have to officially reject it and then republish it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.1, Approval of General Fund Transfer, dated April 1st, 2025?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.2, Approval of the Internal Claims Auditor's Report for February 2025?
Motion. Second. Questions?
Questions?
Some of the, I'm sorry, I don't recall, this is a request actually for the Audit Committee, to that we can just have a, a presentation on how many of the items that were found, that we're not supposed to do, whatever were considered material weaknesses or that we've made changes to, since they've, like, how many years have they told us we've been doing this and shouldn't have, and have we done it, have we fixed those things yet? Can we have something?
Sure.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3, Approval of Treasurer's Report for January and February 2025?
Motion. Second. Motion second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Wait. I would like to know when the treasurer's gonna present to the board to walk us through some of this.
I mean, she could do it as soon, I don't know if you wanna wait until the budget season's over?
Of course, I wait, I'm just saying.
But if you want, after the budget is over, we could do it for the, for the June one.
Thank you.
If you want it earlier, we could, we could make that work.
No, no, June is fine. Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
I waited two years, so I can wait, thank you.
I appreciate it.
And just a point of clarification on that, that will be in the public portion of the meeting.
It will be in the public portion, yes.
I got an actual question, sidebar a little bit. Do we have a timeline on when the board will have, you have a presentation on the impact from the school closings, that how it's going to impact, how it's going to impact closing the gap, something like, you know, this is us closing, are we gonna have a presentation, especially like how it's gonna impact possible teachers' contracts and stuff like that? Are we gonna see anything? I know you told us, I think it was some point around the middle, the end of this month, I think. Do we have a timeline now? I know you're working on the budget heavy.
Yeah, as I put together the budget, I'll have that with it, for the board. So you're saying what the impact was if we didn't close the buildings versus what it is with closing the buildings, and what was that cost savings estimated?
No, I think, I think you gave us that, I just wanna see where we are now, and I wanna know that, for those things, for those reasons that we did close the buildings, where are we now? Teachers' contracts is huge, so, you know, I'm just, that's really something I'd like to see. We did some major drastic cutting to the almost bone. I'd love to, we, I wanna see it, you know?
Yeah, I'll, I'll document that.
Thanks, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 11.4, reject...
He's sobbing, I don't know what that is.
Motion for 11.4, reject proposal for a business operation and finance consultant?
Motion second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 11.5, authorization to enter into a five-year contract, 2026 through 2031, with Southern Westchester BOSI's to furnish certain computer services? Motion, please?
Motion second.
Question?
Questions, concerns?
Under the circumstances where we are actually reviewing the services that BOSI's provides, especially through the technology department, is it possible that we can pull, well, not pull this, but is it, well, I'm not certain that all of the information that we need is in this particular contract. Do we have any time to look at it further? It's a question.
But what are we doing? So we have to pull it?
No, you have to vote it down.
We need, have enough time? Is that what we're doing?
I move to table this particular item until the next meeting, so we can review it further.
All in favor of tabling 11?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 11.6, authorization to accept a monetary donation for the Mount Vernon Educational Foundation?
Motion second. Questions?
Questions?
Can we have, I'd like to know where we spent, the Educational Foundation has been giving us money, I think, consistently. I'd like to see what we've been spending it on, for, for instance, like, what in particular we're gonna spend this on, or how it's gonna... Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't see that part of it. Okay, maybe I missed, okay, never mind.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 11.7, approval for boys' track team to travel to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania for Penn relays?
Motion second.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 11.8, approval for girls' track team to travel to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania for Penn relays?
Motion second.
Questions, concerns, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for, it's gonna be 12.1, motion to read into, into, motion to read the legal notice. I'm gonna, have a motion, and I'm gonna read that.
Motion, second.
Okay, who was first? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? Okay, motion carries, I'm gonna read the notice. The legal notice publication dates are April 4th, April 24th, May 9th, and May 13th, 2025. Notice of the Districtwide Budget Hearing and Annual School Board Budget Vote Election of the City of Mount Vernon, the City School District of the City of Mount Vernon, New York, and the Mount Vernon Public Library. General information, time and place of voting, district-wide budget hearing, voter registration, absentee ballots, early vote ballots, military ballots, final date for receiving petitions of nominations, and filing of school election registers. Notice is hereby given, the annual school budget, the annual school board budget vote election will be held on Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, at 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the purpose of electing three members of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of Mount Vernon, New York, to serve for a full term of three years, beginning on July 1st, 2025, and expiring on June 30th, 2028. And for the purpose of electing two members of the Board of Trustees of the Mount Vernon Public Library, to serve one five-year term, beginning on July 1st, 2025, and expiring on June 30th, 2030. And one three-year term, beginning on July 1st, 2025, and expiring on June 30th, 2028. And further notice is hereby given, the public hearing on the school budget shall be held on Tuesday, May 6th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at the Education Center, located at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. And further notice is hereby given, residents may receive a copy of the budget which will be placed on the district's website, June the 14 days immediately preceding the date of their election. A real, a real property tax exempt report, exemption report, prepared in accordance with Section 495 of the Real Property Tax Law, will be annexed to any proposed budget, as well as the final adopted budget, of which it will form a part, and shall be posted on the district bulletin board, maintained for public notices, as well as on the district's website. And further notice is hereby given, that the final date for receiving petitions of nominations for candidates for members of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of Mount Vernon, New York, three members to serve for a full term of three years, beginning on July 1st, 2025, and expiring June 30th, 2028. And for the purpose of electing two members of the Board of Trustees of the Mount Vernon Public Library, to serve one five-year term, beginning on July 1st, 2025, and expiring on June 30th, 2030. And one three-year term, beginning on July 1st, 2025, and expiring on June 30th, 2028. It's 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, April 30th, 2025, or sooner, in the office of the district clerk, at the Education Center, 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. Nominating petitions are now available in the office of the district clerk. Drawings for placement on the ballot will be held on Thursday, May 1st, 2025, at 4:00 p.m. in the office of the district clerk. Please take further notice, that applications for absentee and early mail ballots may be applied for at the office of the district clerk, located in the administrative offices of the Mount Vernon City School District, 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, 10553. An application for an absentee and early mail ballot on the form prescribed by the New York State Board of Elections must be received by the district clerk no later than 30 days before the annual election. Such application must be received by the district clerk at least seven days before the annual election, if the ballot is to be mailed to the voter, or the day before the annual budgeted vote, election, if the ballot is to be delivered personally to the voter or his or her designated agent. Upon receiving a timely application for a mailed absentee and early mail ballot, the district clerk will mail the ballot to the address designated on the application by no later than six days before the annual election. No absentee and early mail voter's ballot will be counted unless it is received in the office of the district clerk of the City School District of the City of Mount Vernon, 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by 5:00 p.m. on the day of their election. Qualifications for absentee ballot applications. A qualified voter may vote as an absentee voter under this section, if during, if during all the hours of voting on the day of an election, he or she will be absent from the county of his or her residence, or, that was one, or two, unable to appear at the polling place because of illness or physical disability, or duties related to the primary care of one or more individuals who are ill or physically disabled, or three, an inmate for any reason other than conviction of a felony, Education Law 2018-A, 2018-B, or patient of a Veterans Administration Hospital, or four, absent from his or her voting residence because he or she is detained in jail. Voters with permanent disabilities, number five, voters with permanent disabilities, registration records shall be marked so that they automatically receive absentee ballots for each election, Education Law 2018-A, 2G, 2018-B, 2G. Qualifications for early mail ballot applications. A qualified, number one, a qualified voter must be a citizen of the U.S., number two, 18 years of age, number three, a resident of the district for at least 30 days prior to the meeting, and not otherwise prohibited on their election law, 5-106, Education Law 2012. And further notice is hereby given, the Board of Registration of the City School District of the City of Mount Vernon shall meet to prepare the school election district registers for the annual school election on May 6th, 2025, between the hours of 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the boardroom at the Education Center, 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. Any person who is not already registered, upon proving his or her entitlement to vote in the district, may have his or her name placed on the register. The register containing the names of the qualified voters will be available for inspection in the district clerk's office during each of the five days prior to their election, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. In order to vote in the annual school election, read carefully the following instructions. It will be necessary to register for this coming school election. Number one, if you are registered but have changed your place of residence since that time. Number two, if you are not registered under permanent personal registration. Number three, if you now have acquired, or by May 7th will have acquired, the required qualifications to vote in the forthcoming school election under the qualifications of voters listed below. The qualifications for voting are, a citizen of the United States, A; B, 18 years of age or over; C, a resident of New York State and the City School District of the City of Mount Vernon for at least 30 days preceding their election. Date of registration, Tuesday, May 6th, 2025, between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. in the boardroom of the Education Center, 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. And further notice is hereby given, that the annual school board budget vote election will be held on Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for three members to serve for a full term of three years, beginning on July 1st, 2025, and expiring on June 30th, 2028. And for the purpose of electing two members of the Board of Trustees of the Mount Vernon Public Library, to serve one five-year term, beginning on July 1st, 2025, and expiring on June 30th, 2028. And one three-year term, beginning on July 1st, 2025, and expiring on June 30th, 2028. Notice is also given, that an accurate description of the boundaries of the school election district into which the City School District of the City of Mount Vernon is divided, is on file, and may be inspected at the office of the district clerk, 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. The public schools where such elections will be held are as follows. District number one, Lincoln School, 170 East Lincoln Avenue. District four, Cecile H. Parker School, 461 South Sixth Avenue. District five, Hamilton School, 20 Oak Street. District six, Trapp-Hagen School, 72 Lexington Avenue. District seven, Edward Williams School, 9 Union Lane. District nine, Graham School, 421 East Fifth Street. District 11, Pennington School, 20 Fairway. District 14, Rebecca Turner Elementary School, 625 South Fourth Avenue. District 17, Home School, 195 North Columbus Avenue. District 22, Grimes School, 58 South 10th Avenue. Budget election information will be available on the website at www.mtvernoncsd.org/election in multiple languages. And further notice is hereby given, that military voters who are not currently registered may apply to register as a qualified voter of the school district. Military voters who are qualified voters of the school district may submit an application for a military ballot. Military voters may designate a preference to receive a military voter registration, military ballot application, or military ballot by mail, facemail, transmission, or electronic mail in their request for such registration, ballot application, or ballot. Military, military voter registration forms and military ballot application forms must be received in the office of the district clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. on May 5th, 2025. No military ballot will be canvassed unless it is received in the office of the district clerk before, before the close of the polls on election day, and shown a cancellation mark of the United States Postal Service, or a foreign country's postal service, or shown a dated endorsement of receipt by another agency of the United States government, or received by the office of the district clerk by no later than 5:00 p.m. on election day, and signed and dated by the military voter and one witness thereto, with a date which is associated to be no later than a day before the election, by order of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of Mount Vernon, New York. Rita James, District Clerk.
That was the part of the amendment, so we didn't amend.
She exclude the part that had the extra? She exclude the part that had the extra? Okay, good.
I have a question.
I have a, oh, she, there's a motion?
Questions, comments, or?
You put the motion?
You put the motion? I have a...
We have to accept that, don't we? But she has, so, so your questions, comments, or whatever.
Motion to accept what was read.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions?
I, I have a question.
Uh huh.
Is, on the record, is this, um, resolution going on as being amended? No?
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't put on the board as a resolution. So you can't be in, it wasn't, we only, we'll be...
So we just, he, we just voting on what was read?
Exactly.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cavemotion now for 13.1, Motion to Enter into Executive Session for the Purpose of Discussing Pending Litigation, the Financial History of a Particular Person or Corporation, or Matters Leading to the Appointment, Employment, Demotion, Discipline, Suspension, Dismissal, or Removal of a Particular Person or Corporation, and to Receive Legal Advice on a Pending Matter. Cavemotion, motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Any abstain? Okay, motion carries, we are in executive session.
Thank you. We, uh, we're, we will not be returning tonight. Thank you, have a good evening, everyone.